Now called to order, welcome to our August fourteenth workshop session. It's a great day outside, I'm sure you will agree. Madam Secretary, can we get roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. Unfortunately, Katie Browning is not here today. She's ill, but everyone else is in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now move on to the presentation portion. If we could get Mrs. Fairchild.
I'd like to thank the members of the board and the administration for this opportunity to recognize Gay Kirshner. Gay has been an educator for thirty-five years, and I think we did the math right. And she's been in Carmel for fifteen years. And she has been a trainer of nonviolent crisis intervention since two thousand and five. And if you're not familiar with NCI, the purpose of that training is so our educators can be highly skilled in verbal de-escalation techniques and learn personal safety strategies for when students are in distress. Gay achieved master trainer status in two thousand and ten. And then, just this summer, she was presented the Meritorious Achievement Award at the Crisis Prevention Institute's National Conference. And I want to be able to give you some of the statistics as to why Gay received this award. So, her total cumulative hours of training that she has facilitated was one thousand eight hundred and forty-three. She has taught two hundred and sixty-six training classes. And she has trained a total of three thousand four hundred and forty-six staff members. So, we can see why Gay earned this meritorious award. So, Gay, if you'd like to come on up.
Congratulations, that's super impressive. Thank you so much for your assistance in helping us be better educators. Next on the agenda would normally be public comment. We do not have anyone that signed up for public comments, so we're going to move on to consent. Consent includes personnel, reports, claims, payroll, and our building-level safety plan template. Also, our CCS corporate safety plan for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Okay, so we'll now vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, unanimous, motion carries. All right, so next we will move on to our action items. Action item this morning, or this evening, is to adopt a resolution authorizing publication of notices of public hearings. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. At the last meeting, I presented what was titled "The Twenty Twenty Four Facility Projects." So, the next step in that is to, one of the requirements, the beginning requirement, is to advertise and hold two public hearings. And the idea there is, is to give the public opportunity to comment and the board opportunity to hear those comments as you're deliberating in considering these projects. And so, in addition to that, one of the hearings, any projects that's over a million dollars, you're required to have a hearing on it. And then, identify what the perceived need or value of the project is, as well as the impact to taxpayers. And so, that'll be a part of one of these, probably the first hearing, I believe. And then, there'll be a second hearing. So, we have a, so this is running, this process, this beginning process to provide financing should we go forward with projects. But also, hear from the public relative to the projects themselves, or the financing of the projects. And so, that's the purpose of this. And so, this is requesting authorization to advertise for those hearings.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McMichael? Okay. So, may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the publication of notice of public hearings?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Well, are there, is there any discussion? I know I asked them ago. No? Okay. All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Motion carries. The second action item this evening is to adopt a resolution in support of military families. Mr. Woodward.
Thank you. I want to speak tonight and address an initiative that's personal to me, probably personal to a lot of people in this room who may have family who are in the military. The Department of Education provides a program called the Indiana Purple Star Designation. This honors schools that have displayed a significant commitment to service members, veterans, and students and families of those who are connected to our nation's military. As part of this application process, there are several factors and requirements for this application. So, initially, when we started this process, we asked our schools, eh, who would be able to meet these requirements? And all fifteen of our buildings said that they wanted to meet these requirements. Number one, would be have an assigned point of contact for military families, that's in each building. Number two, this point of contact would complete specific training, grade-level training, with regards to working with military families. I took the training myself before investigating this further, found it very helpful. It's fairly brief, but it was educational if you're not specifically in the military. It requires your buildings to each have a dedicated webpage, to host an annual military program that demonstrates a military-friendly culture within your school, to have a public military display that can range from anything from a trophy case with a student-made display, or even a declaration within the building of your support of military and military families. It requires a school board passing a resolution publicizing support for military students and families, and requires that military service members and their immediate family who meet the minimum qualifications for a job opening would be guaranteed a job interview. So, those are the requirements that a school would need to meet. We have fifteen schools who are interested in pursuing this designation. And so, it'd be my recommendation that the board adopts a resolution in support of military families.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the resolution for authorizing the resolution in support of military families?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions for Mr. Woodward?
Yeah, I'm very proud that all fifteen schools have stood up and wanted to go for this designation. So, it's quite a statement to our, to those families that have served, or had someone serve in the military. Very proud of them. Thanks.
Any additional comments? Yeah, I'm extremely excited about this, too. Giving additional opportunities to those that service our, or serve our country, I think is an amazing thing. So, thank you for leading this.
Thank you.
We'll take a vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries. Next is discussion. We'll move on to the item that is CCS School Handbooks, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Woodward, you have another opportunity.
Okay, so, discussing handbooks, over the past couple of years, we've worked pretty hard to basically align the handbooks at each level. So, until two years ago, every elementary school had a separate handbook. And the language wasn't aligning, same with the middle schools, and of course, the high school has its own. So, we convened the group together to basically align the handbooks, so the contents within basically matched from school to school. Now, there are slight differences that they still are able to post, such as drop-off pickup. And those are basically based on geography and logistics of their building. Otherwise, the contents are very similar. The changes that I propose to you all now for approval are basically administrative changes rather than substantive. The elementary buildings remain the same, our handbooks, there were no changes this year. The middle school level, the work was done to update the dress code language that would more closely match the high school. I provided you all some documents outlining what those changes would be this year. The high school level, the changes were to address some vernacular. So, rather than finals, now we have something called an ACE, which is an assessment of culminating expectations. So, experiences, okay. So, they don't all take a test necessarily as their final. They also added some language with regards to plagiarism that addressed artificial intelligence. And because we now use Attendance Manager, the, some of the call-in requirements for attendance have changed. So, again, some vernacular, a little substantive, but most of it very much administrative.
Thank you. We'll take some additional time to review what you've sent, and this will come up again for voting, right? Okay. Next. Oh, sure, if you have questions, I don't think I need to take a motion today. No. Yeah, do you have questions? Sure.
Yeah, just, on the dress code for the middle schools, I understand that you're trying to just adopt the high school one, and apparently, that's been found to be useful or effective.
Yep.
Okay. Reading through the previous dress code for the middle schools, it seemed to me, and I'm not, I don't have experience from the application, but it seemed to be less, I don't want to say restrictive, but it seems to be a little bit looser in some of the verbiage. You know, like specifically, the previous one talked about, you know, the length of shorts and dresses and skirts that they needed to be, they weren't supposed to be short, and they weren't supposed to attract attention. Whereas, the new one uses a little more generic words. It doesn't mention short or attract attention, it mentions adequate coverage. And, you know, similarly with the previous one, or the current one, I guess I should say, says that any clothing which reveals undergarments or the lack of undergarments will be considered inappropriate. But the new one says students cannot wear clothing that reveals visible undergarments. So, again, that seems a little less clear and restrictive. And then, lastly, the current one mentions plunging necklines or visible cleavages shall not be permitted. The new ones say students must wear a shirt, fabric in the front and on the sides, under the arms, extending to at least the navel. There's no mention of plunging necklines or visible cleavage. It does say adequate coverage and chests are fully covered in common decency, which that kind of makes sense. But I, I just, I wouldn't want us to see us loosen up the standards for just the goal of standardizing. So, I don't know if you have, you know, comments on those observations?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in our discussions with the principals, what we found was that the old language was almost too prescriptive. And suddenly, rather than dealing with clothing that may be disrupting the educational environment, suddenly, we have a student who may come in and say, now, according to your policy, my clothes actually meet the requirement, which still could be disruptive to the educational environment. And so, it became difficult, I think, to police and to work through with students. So, we thought adopting a more generalized approach to that, if it's disrupting the school environment, we can take action. Mostly, when I say action, we really want it to be discussion with parents on what's appropriate for your student coming into the school, not just for school, because our plan is to prepare them for the workforce. Would this be appropriate for the workforce? So, that's the steps we'd want to take before discipline.
So, you think in practice, the high school one has been, has worked well?
To my knowledge, yes. I haven't had any complaints that we've been too loose. High school's happy with what they're doing. Really, so much of it is consulting and working with that kid and with that parent, rather than straight discipline.
So, will you have any more discussion with those that you're working with on the policies from this point on, or?
Really, only if they reach out and say, hey, this isn't working, and we need to do something additional.
Okay. All right. I would just, if you could, just, if you could mention that, I raise a concern that maybe some of, maybe we've gone a little too far with the generalization. And I understand trying to have a policy in place that works well and doesn't cause too much nitpicking. But, you know, remembering back to my school days, you know, the length of garments, pants, and shirts, and things was pretty, was a problem area, and we needed to be pretty clear about it. So, by removing like that specific one, you know, the length, you know, short is not allowed, seems to be a little bit too general or lax.
It's a fine line, really, it's a walk.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think, I have an appreciation for specificity and clarity. I also think about something called the spirit of the law and the spirit of rules. Unfortunately, when we're dealing with people who have a difference of opinion of whether a neckline is, you know, meeting the specification in our rules or guidelines, we're not focused on the spirit behind it, which is, it's a distraction. It's causing an issue, and people can't focus in class. So, I totally get how we are, you know, deciding to evolve the language to make sure we get to the spirit of the reason behind the rule. So, I, I'm grateful for that. And then, the second thing is, I have an appreciation for the fact that we do have several people that look at these policies and get perspectives, Greg. So, it's not just one person making the policy. So, if you want to, do you want to speak to more about how we come to a finalization of bringing a policy to the board or updating the handbook?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the process that we follow just for the last couple of years is we convene the principals and we review the handbook. Where are we, and where have we been lacking? And what needs changed? And so, the goal isn't necessarily to do a major overhaul. The goal is to make sure what we have is actually working within the buildings. So, that was one that, you know, to Mr. Brown's credit, he was talking about specificity. I think sometimes the specificity ties our hands a little bit. And so, I think that was what actually they brought to the table, was, you know, we don't feel like we can police some of this. And in some of these ways, we are, we're tying ourselves up a little bit.
And then, I think it's really good, too, that we're aligning our rules with the middle school, with the high school. Because why have a difference? I mean, it should be consistent. You know? Yeah, I don't know. What else? What do you?
I was also thinking, I would hate for some of the children who are less privileged, I know they grow so quickly, my son grew at such a phenomenal pace, and for a child like my son to be called out if his pant leg was shorter than maybe one thought it should be because he had grown at such a fast rate, and I wasn't able, as a single mom, to provide brand-new clothing for him. And certainly, you know, there may be kids that think that's a distraction because they want to embarrass him. But I certainly wouldn't want us to cause some of those families to feel financial hardship.
Yeah, I think the point that I was raising wasn't about pants, it was more about skirts and shorts and dresses. I think that's where there is going to be kind of a problem, and it can be very distracting. So, I, I understand the intent, and sometimes, it's better to be less specific. So, as long as the principals realize where we're going from, and two, if they think it's going to work better for them in those regards, and we don't have a problem, then I'm okay with it. I was just a little surprised, it seemed more lax, and sometimes, you do need some specificity.
I think, I had two things. The first thing was with regards to the dress part, and then, a second one. But the first one, with regards to the dress, I appreciate that you're kind of leaving this up to the relationship between the schools and the parents. Because as a parent of three kids who are in the schools, I think that's, that's what I want. You know, if there's a problem with what one of my children is wearing, I would appreciate it brought up to me. And, you know, we can discuss it as a family, and as my husband and I, or, you know, whatever your parental units look like, discussing that together, along with a relationship with the school. So, I appreciate that. I just wanted to say also, in the high school policy, I really liked the addition of the artificial intelligence part because I, that was going to be actually something I was going to email about and ask what was going to be going on because with Chat, Chat GPT? And some of the other ones. I know I've heard rumors around the country of just what's going on and what they are capable of doing, writing whole papers for kids. So, I appreciate the forethought to put that in there.
Yes, it's all. Do I have to say that again, or hopefully, you heard it? Okay?
From the top.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you, Dr. Woodward. Next on the agenda is reports. So, Dr. Beresford, I think you're the only one that has a report today.
I think we need to have the workshop first, so.
I was ready to go home.
Yeah, sorry, it would have been the shortest meeting ever, but, but this is a Dave Woodward show.
Workshop topic.
And so, I think we should go ahead and have that, Student Services Update.
Okay, we're going to move on to our workshop topic. Doctor or Mr. Woodward?
Okay, so for my third topic tonight, it is, it's my honor to present on our safety initiatives here at Carmel Clay Schools to the board. You know, everything we're going to talk about tonight, I want to tie back to our strategic plan. The strategic plan itself is available on our website. The safety plan, the details are not, they are excluded from public record. However, we're going to talk about some initiatives that we're very proud of and are very public. Please know that everything we talk about, even as it aligns with the strategic plan, is based on state and national best practices as well. I don't need to emphasize the importance of safety with this group, but I do want to point out that it falls with our guiding principles in the strategic plan. Students' academic, social, emotional, and physical needs must be addressed. And a safe and non-threatening learning environment is essential. And that is, that is the crux of what we do. If staff don't feel safe, they can't teach. If students don't feel safe, they can't learn. Also, as Director of Student Services, it's my responsibility to check all these boxes from the strategic plan. Ensure everyone has a safe and supportive environment, ensure their social, emotional needs are met, ensure access to mental health supports, and serve as a resource for families with school concerns. And I also want to lead you to strategic examples from our strategic plan. But mainly, I want to point out our key measures. When we put this together, we wanted to say, how do we know that we are meeting our goals? And so, we wanted to specifically measure our monthly drill tracking, we want a hundred percent. We want our staff and student training cycles. My motto, and really, the motto we've adopted here is a well-trained staff and student body is the key to school safety. And so, we train our staff, we train our students, and we do it repeatedly. And I'm going to show you how we do that through the school here in a moment. Implementation of a full-time SRO in every school, you're going to see SROs rolling in here all throughout this presentation. We can't get everyone here today, but a large majority of them, and you'll meet all of them here as well. Contracted mental health service and data trend analysis, and then, our Stop It Anonymous tip line, another measure for our success. So, we talk about layers upon layers of school safety. Well-trained staff and student body, as I'd mentioned. Comprehensive update of our emergency preparedness plans, again, based on state and national best practices. We train everybody in this school corporation. If you're a new staff member, you have to do two hours with myself and Lieutenant Miller, who's in the back. Everybody who comes, no matter what time of the year they come, they get that training. And then, as part of their ongoing training, as members of the staff, they get it again, trained by the SROs themselves. We train bus drivers, we train cafeteria staff, we train custodial, we train front office staff. Everybody in our school corporation needs to know what to do within the first moments of a crisis. Everyone has a safety plan, but does everyone know what to do in those initial moments? And that, to me, is the key to safe schools. Are they trained? Are they empowered? So, I'm going to talk about the continuum of safety. We're going to talk from prevention, how do we keep things from happening, to mitigation. Something bad has happened, how do we, how do we keep the damage to a minimum? We incorporate the training that we give people, and we give to our students through a couple of different venues. Number one, the SROs train and work with all the students. Additionally, we participate in Safe Schools Week, where every day that week, they get a new topic. And we talk about, hey, how do you keep our school safe as students? That can be as easy as propping the door, making anonymous reports, if you see something, you say something. Reporting things that happen online, digital citizenship, all of those things are woven in to what they do during that week. From the, from the strategic plan, ensuring all students experience a safe and supportive environment, positive culture is a key to prevention in a school. I'll show you a few examples of that. But our students and staff want to feel welcome. And that's exhibited from the people in this room, all the way down through the classrooms. Every student, every staff member needs to feel safe and supported, no matter if you're big, small, little tall, no matter what your religion is, every one of our students and staff feels supported. And we put a lot of work into that. I want to mention something one of our principals said, Jennifer Green, and she's over at Mohawk Trails. We had a student who came, and he had issues with elopement. I mean, he wanted to run from school, he'd never even been to school before, he comes to us in seventh grade. We talked about a safety plan for this student, and Special Services was working with them. And her statement to me, and this also exhibits her SRO, who isn't here quite yet, but we're going to love on this kid, we're going to wrap arms around this kid until they are successful. And that is a huge key to prevention. Because if you don't do that, as these students get older, you're going to have some problems. And so, we start it from the, from the very beginning. You guys all remember the TikTok video that went viral? This was seen by over a million people. And our students, this basically showed our students are proud of their school. And the students who participated in it, and all the students who saw and liked it, again, over a million likes, actually, on TikTok. Your facilities play a role in prevention. There's something called Broken Windows Theory. And it basically says, if there's visible signs of neglect in your school or in your community, crime goes up. It's because it basically shows you don't care. Well, that's not going to happen in Carmel Clay Schools. And that's evident by these kids and the pride that you saw in that video. The messaging that we have throughout our schools, it's everywhere. It's positive, it's welcoming. It's positive, it's welcoming, and it's part of prevention. I took this picture years ago doing a safety audit in another school somewhere in Indiana. This is an expelled fire extinguisher with trash. You can even see gum was placed along the edge of the container. What does this tell you about that school? Tells you they don't care. That won't happen in Carmel Clay Schools, because our kids care about their facility, our kids care about each other, and kids protect what they love. And they love one another, they love their teachers, they love their schools. And so that leads us, there's a blocked fire exit, I copied as well, again, sends the same message. That leads us to the information we send out to schools and to families in our emails, in our signage. Kids want safe schools, and they tell us they want safe schools, bless you. They use our anonymous reporting system over 7,000 times in the last five years. They've activated it 7,000 times. We've had 2,700 anonymous reports. I can tell you, and I know a couple of our SROs can tell you, we think some students are alive because of this, because of self-harm and plans to hurt themselves, and other students took care of them. And we always say, if you say something, if you see something, say something, and we will do something. And it's something we stand by, and this gives our students the opportunity to do it. And it's an app they can download, but they don't have to download it if they don't want to. They can access it from our website as well. And clearly, they do. So as we're talking about our strategic plan, and one of the key measures is the anonymous reporting, and do we have data to support it? And boy, do we. We have 30 certified school safety specialists. These are people trained by Department of Education, five days of training minimum, two additional days every school year. Two people on the dais are certified safety specialists, Dr. Beresford and Dr. O'Stryke. We have monthly meetings where we basically take our plans to scale. First of all, what are our lessons learned that month? So we're all learning the same lesson. There's no reason that someone at Mohawk has an incident and they learn from it, and then the people at Town Meadow don't learn from it. We all have to learn our lessons going forward, make sure we're all practicing and communicating. We do a tabletop at the majority of these meetings, which is basically I throw out a scenario for them with regards to safety, and we run it in real time. What would you do? Now what would you do? Now what would you do? Because our goal is that they be prepared. Again, everyone has a safety plan. Do they have the mindset? And are they ready for an issue? And that's my job, to make sure that they have that and that they're ready. I say my job. In reality, our SROs do way more of that than I do, so it's a team effort. We conduct our drills. Again, back to the strategic plan, do we have 100% participation in our drills? Yes. We do two man-made occurrence drills, that means a lockdown drill per semester, one tornado drill per semester, one fire drill a month, and one earthquake drill per year. We actually go beyond what the state mandated requirement is for lockdown drills, and we can substitute a fire drill, because data tells us that it's very hard to burn a school, and we haven't lost a life in an American school due to fire in my lifetime, but we have lost lives due to violence. So our legislature has allowed us to substitute drills, and so we substitute an additional lockdown drill in most of our buildings. We also do what we call blocked exit drills, where during a fire drill, we will have staff actually stand at a door and say, if this exit is blocked, where do you go? It's a calm discussion, and it's a training opportunity. All the drills are a training opportunity, never a gotcha moment. How do we train our staff? And so we talk, Dr. Beresford says this all the time, drip, drip, drip. Teach them, teach them, teach them. And so every time we have a drill, it's an opportunity to teach our kids and teach our staff. And the goal is, we teach them for safety outside of our schools. We want them to know what to do with the mall, the theater, even at home. Our staff need to be empowered, and to be empowered, you need to be trained, and you need to know what to do. So when we do our new staff training, we tell every one of them, congratulations on your new job title, it's part of the school safety team. They're all part of the school safety team, every member of our staff. We know who can pull a fire alarm in schools, right? Anybody. Anyone can pull a fire alarm. Who can call a lockdown? Well, for years, and still in some schools, even in this state, only a principal can call a lockdown. That's faulty thinking, because we lose people to violence in our schools. Every member of our staff is taught how to call a lockdown, and they're empowered to do it. In fact, in the majority of our schools, when we do a lockdown drill, you don't do it early, because we're teaching, right? But as the year goes on, we have staff members call it. We want them to know how to do it, and we want them to be practiced up with how to do it. Staff are underutilized in safety in schools. We just want to conduct low-stress, high-impact audits, and I'm going to show you an example of one of those in a few moments. We have made camera upgrades. Over the last couple of years, we received grant from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, and so we have really solid coverage throughout our buildings. We are able to track someone's movement throughout the buildings in real time and communicate that to the responding law enforcement officers. In fact, they have helped one another. We had a lockdown last year, and we had an officer from one building actually tracking what was going on, relaying that information again in real time to these people who responded. And I can tell you, we were having a safety specialist meeting when this lockdown was called, and that room emptied out so fast, and they were there literally within 30 seconds of one another as that unfolded. And everyone was safe, and it turned into, really wasn't necessary as a lockdown, but boy, was I glad they called it, because if you're in doubt, you call it. Communications, we have not changed our radio system, but we've changed how we use it. We used to have a lot of radios sitting around in this school corporation that were basically being unused and being used to listen, but not to talk. And so by training our staff, this was a great initiative from Carmel Police Department, by training our staff to access a new channel created, we are able to actually shave almost two minutes off of a standard 911 call, because when you call 911, there's a script that they follow. If you respond on this radio, you're talking directly to 21 SROs who can respond way quicker, because they don't have to go through that script. We've used it for medical emergencies, we've used it for other emergencies. We've also made access control improvements. It's a component of our strategic plan. I'm going to show you a video that was created by our SROs and put out by Ms. Emily Bauer.
Hi there, how can I help you?
I'm here to volunteer at the Media Center.
Okay, come on in.
It's Officer Harris.
Do you have a luggage?
Yes.
Can you see that moving piece right there? Thank you. You gotta tilt it. There we go. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
How can I help you?
Well, I'm here to volunteer at the Media Center.
Oh. Okay, you're good to go.
Thanks.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
How can I help you?
I'm volunteering at the Media Center.
You are? Oh, how about right here? This door's closer?
There it is.
You have to go around. This is, door one, go around. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Remember, every school is a little bit different in the district, so please remember to follow your school's protocol.
We appreciate your cooperation in keeping our students and staff at Carmel Clay Schools safe.
So that's part of our culture here. In fact, it's part of our culture even in this building, even for this meeting, we know who's coming in. There's no surprises when you enter a school building at Carmel Clay Schools. Now, this is a picture of a door prop, basically a rock used to keep our doors open. This is unacceptable and won't happen at Carmel Clay Schools. And every one of our members of our safety team, which is every staff member, has been told, when you see this, you throw it and you report it, and if it comes back, you tell me, and we can find out who did it, because that's going to be unacceptable in our buildings. I took this picture years ago. Again, that is a buzzer system with a brick, and it says, we kind of talk safety, we don't really mean it. Well, that won't happen here. And the video, it's funny and it's loose, but it explains, this is our procedure and we will not bend from it. You also notice the people asking the question, how may I help you? We ask everyone to say that if they see someone without a badge or an ID. So we conduct audits. You're going to see the person here on the left, the shabby-dressed guy is someone I used to work with at Department of Education. Brought him into our buildings. Our SROs were aware, the front-office staff were aware. There's no gotchas for our office staff. We wanted to have him walk through the building and see who would stop him. We did this twice last year. Our first one had results that were unacceptable to me. And so we did some training again throughout the corporation. This next one, we had near 90%. That means of everyone he passed, if it was an adult, how many people stopped him? I had to basically jump in front of Jill Ship over at West Clay, but she was ready to go after this guy. And that's another great example of the culture that we have. But I want to show you a video. As he walks through, this staff member tracked him and confronts him. Now, our staff is told, you don't have to be the one who goes and has this conversation. You can call the front office and say, hey, there's someone walking through the building. You can have an SRO do it. In fact, we always tell people, if you're uncomfortable talking to someone who, you know, you're not sure why they're there, I guarantee you, we have someone in uniform who's not uncomfortable talking to anybody. And so notify that SRO, because they will come, and they will address this. I always take a moment in every safety presentation to talk about our partnership with Carmel Police Department and the Carmel Fire Department. Carmel Fire Department went above and beyond and actually provided our school corporation with Stop the Bleed kits for every single classroom and every single bus in our school corporation. Just an amazing contribution, along with the training that went with it. I presented this last year to the group, and actually showed video of one of our principals saving someone's life in midsummer when a construction worker stopped, and he couldn't make it to a hospital, so he stopped and buzzed at one of our schools. And he was able to implement his training and use his Stop the Bleed kit. So much thanks to Carmel Fire Department. Briefly, I want to mention vaping. You know, schools are a reflection of our community and our kids, and our kids, not just in Hamilton County, but across the nation, vaping is so easily accessible, and so it's, the use is just going up and up and up, and it's being marketed to our kids. And so it's arrived in our schools. And our kids want safe and healthy schools. And so they've told us, there are areas in our school where we have vaping issues. And so we've increased our supervision, but we've also implemented vape detectors. And so this was from a grant from the Hamilton County Office of Alcohol and Tobacco and Other Drugs. It's a long acronym. So this funding came from them. We also, as part of our jewel suit, will implement additional vape detectors, and even more importantly, prevention and quitting resources for our kids who do have a problem with vaping. We've provided, as you see on the screen, multiple online trainings and resources for our students and staff. And we provide many of these also through our Parent Resource Center. So your typical Parents Night just doesn't pull, doesn't pull the attendance. So let's meet them where they are. And so we made multiple videos, and we push them out, and we have them available for our parents to access. And there's many on there, including the Indiana Lifeline Law, which students need to know about to help friends who may have a substance problem in that moment. So a key measure from our strategic plan is the implementation of the SRO program, and to get an SRO in every one of our school buildings. And so this is a great picture of the team itself, including Chief Barlow from Carmel Police Department at the NASRO conference this year, where they won the Model Agency of the Year. In my opinion, there's nothing more valuable than a highly-trained, carefully-selected SRO. And to review who they are and talk further about that, I want to introduce Lieutenant Adam Miller to the podium to talk a little bit about the program and his team.
Good evening. I know some of you have seen this before, but for our new board members that weren't here last year, I'm going to recap a little bit about our unit. I do want to point this out, the National Association of School Resource Officers is who awarded these awards this year. I want to point out one, he's not here tonight. We've got about a third of our group actually is not able to attend tonight, because our SROs don't just do this. The Carmel Police Department allows us to have specialties outside of our normal jobs. We have a large number of SROs that are also part of our Event Response Group. This is a group of specially-trained officers that respond, think about Carmel Fest, other big events. They also go down to Indianapolis and help with some big events. They're having some training tonight that they need to be at. One of them is Officer Navarrete. He works at Mohawk Trails Elementary. He was awarded the Bridging the Gap Award. Want to point that out, because Mohawk Trails experienced an influx of Spanish-speaking families over this last year. And having Officer Navarrete at that school has done wonders, because there are a lot of kids that needed extra supports. And because of where they came from, the culture, not knowing the language, they had some difficulty understanding what we can offer in Carmel Police Schools. And Officer Navarrete bridged that gap, and he got help to a lot of these kids and these families that would not have had that help had he not been there. So it was a huge award for that. The State Association awarded David Woodward the School Safety Leader of the Year Award. He's just been instrumental for so many years throughout the state, as well as here at Carmel Clay Schools. So it was really nice to have him receive that award. The meetings this year were actually down in Indianapolis, the JW Marriott. It was really nice to have everything happen in our backyard. And the school resource officers, we have here in Carmel. I'm going to brag a little bit about them. That award would not be possible without the work they do day in and day out. They are phenomenal, and just can't do without them. I want to show you a little bit about SROs and what that means, because I think for you guys, as well as anybody watching online, there's maybe a misconception of police officers in schools. Sometimes they talk about SROs, school resource officers, but they're not always school resource officers. There's a big difference between a specifically-selected and effectively-trained SRO and just a police officer in the schools. Here at Carmel Police Department, to become a school resource officer, it's a competitive process. You have to volunteer for it, there's an interview process. Not everybody who interviews gets selected. So once we choose who we think would be a good SRO, then they have to go through about 100 hours of training specific to working in a school environment. They attend a basic SRO school that's taught by NASRO, go to our state conference, our national conference. We put on training here with our own people. We want them to be highly-trained before they ever set foot in a school. This is really important to us. We work off a triad concept, and this is what's put out by NASRO. If you look at this triad, at the base of it, educator and informal counselor, that is really the base of what we do as SROs. The educator, we do have a couple of professional educators. We had a couple of former teachers that became police officers, which has been very helpful. But a lot of us just come into these schools with a lot of life experience. We love to get in the classrooms, whether it's a math class, English class, you name it, to interact with these kids and build relationships. So that's where the educator and the informal counselor mentoring, building relationships with these kids is huge. This is why we do this job. We care about the kids, just like all the teachers and every other staff member. We do this job because we really care about the kids. And it's amazing to think, the connections aren't just with the students. We're also connecting with their parents, their grandparents, the aunts and uncles, everybody who attends the school events with their kids. We have over 16,000 students in this district. When you think about them and all their family members, our school resource unit has the ability to impact about half the city's population at any given time in a positive way. This is not us coming to your house because a crisis has happened. This is we're in your schools, we're interacting at a time of non-conflict. This is just a wonderful way for us to connect with our community. I think that's what's special about Carmel. The collaboration we have with Carmel Police Department and Carmel Clay Schools. The collaboration we have with Carmel Police Department and Carmel Clay Schools is really second to none. At our conferences, we talk to a lot of SROs and agencies from around the country. We have something very special here in Carmel, and we want to keep that going. At the top of the triad, you do see law enforcement officer, it's very obvious we're police officers. A lot of what we do law enforcement wise, though, is behind the scenes, you've read over safety plans that we have for the district, every building. Every safety plan is tailored to that school. The SRO, the School Safety Specialists, the principals, they all get together and work as a team to make sure the schools are safe. We do a lot of planning behind the scenes. Sometimes we do have to take law enforcement action, but even when that happens, a lot of our initiatives are to give kids second chances, help change their behavior. It's not to get them in the juvenile justice system, it's to help them make better choices. One of our SROs at the high school right now, Officer Rogowski, is working on a plan to build a diversion program. Vaping is a serious problem we have in our schools right now. He's working on a diversion program, not just for Carmel Clay Schools, but Hamilton County as a whole is looking at it, how can we help more kids get away from vaping? And this is an initiative from the high school, we're looking at a middle school program, and we also have one in the elementaries. So, from 5th grade through 12th grade, we're trying, trying to get these kids to make better choices and be better adults. So, that's how the triad works, we're very proud of that. And that is really the premise behind that Model Agency Award our SROs got, is the proficiency and professionalism they showed, taking this triad approach and putting it in the Carmel Clay Schools. So, what I want to do now, the SROs are able to make it tonight, this is the part, they love talking to kids and families, they get a little nervous when they're in public, though. I'm going to have them all come up here, and just tell a little bit about themselves briefly, and I'll sort of start. So, I'm Adam Miller, I'm the lieutenant over the School Resource Unit. I'm in my 29th year at the Carmel Police Department. 26 of those years I spent on the streets, most of the time as a supervisor. Spent some time training, I've been an instructor, been on the SWAT team before, so I bring some of that experience into the schools to make things safer. And the last, this is now my third school year with Carmel Clay Schools, it's been probably the most rewarding assignment I've ever had at the Police Department, so I'm happy to be here. I want to welcome up the SROs. And they're going to share a little bit about themselves as well.
Good evening, everybody. I am Officer Ashley Commodore. I became a police officer in 2013. This is my third year as a School Resource Officer, I'm at Woodbrook Elementary here on the east side of town. My personal and dream goal has always been to be a police officer, but an SRO. So, being able to fulfill that dream and that passion to be with our kids here in this awesome community has truly been a blessing in my life. So, thank you guys for making it possible and supporting us the way that you do.
Hi, everyone, I'm Officer David Commodore. This is my better half. Same, I became a police officer in 2013 as well, and I agree, like Lieutenant Miller said, this has been the best position that I've held, even through the military, just the effects that we have on the kids, and seeing it on their faces on a daily basis, coming back to school and seeing their excitement, it has been a pleasure. I'm at Collegewood Elementary, and this is my second year as an SRO. Thank you all.
Hello, I'm Officer Chad Wigman. I've been on Carmel for 18 years. I think I'm probably the old guy of the group. I am at Creekside Middle School. This is actually my, I started at Creekside back in October of last year. So, this is my first year, like, starting the school year, which has actually been pretty good. Start, Creekside's a great school, great kids, great staff. It's been neat to see the beginning of the school year, since I didn't see that last year, so it's actually been really beneficial for me as well. So, I really enjoy it so far, and thank you for having us.
Hello, I'm Luke Gossett. Been a police officer for 17 years. This is my fourth year, starting at, as an SRO, and I'm over at Clay Center Elementary. Really looking forward to a good year.
Hi, I'm Ashley Williams. Been with the Carmel Police Department for 16 years. Mostly did street work for about 13, 13 and a half. Moved into the high school in 2020, so I've been there about three years now. On the time on the road was a field evidence tech and also a field training officer, so, but just happy to get another year started.
Well, hello, my name's Dustin Van Tries. I'm at Clay Middle School. I started my law enforcement career in 2008. I ran the McGruff the Crime Dog Program for Marion County for quite a few years. I went to the City of Lawrence Police Department for a couple of years, got tired of being waved at by, with one finger, they were not telling me I was number one. I came to Carmel 2017, and this is where I learned what the kids say, "I have more of a podcast face," whatever that means. So, happy to be here, thank you.
That's a hard one to follow. I'm Officer Matt Harris, I'm the School Resource Officer at Prairie Trace Elementary. I started there in February of 2021. Been an officer for 10 years, spent five years in Franklin, this will be my fifth year here in Carmel. Very happy to be here, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Greg Zimmerman. I was hired on Carmel PD in 2017, starting my fourth year at Town Meadow. Really appreciate all the support from the school district. Currently, I assist in the coordination of our summer programs with our youth academy. I know Officer Broadneck's going to be here tonight, but he helps coordinate the teen academies as well, help coordinate the cadet program, and I'm the treasurer for the Indiana Association of School Resource Officers. Thank you.
Hello, and I'm Troy Smith. I've been here with the Police Department, I'm in my 28th year, so, actually Officer Wigman is not the old guy. A couple of us are. This is my second full year as an SRO supervisor. You know, the, I, I can't say enough about the relationship between the school and the Police Department. I mean, it, it's fantastic, it's, it's way more than I thought it would be, to be very honest with you. Really enjoy working with the school. And it's really good to get to work with all of the SROs. I mean, talk about people that are dedicated to their job and love what they do, it's so fun, and it's really easy to supervise people like that, that, that are happy to be here every day and, and want to do a good job. So, I, like Lieutenant Miller, have been all over different places, Drug Task Force, I've done SWAT, I've done everything else. This is a really cool position to be in, I'm, I'm really enjoying it, with my second
They didn't quite know what they were going to have to say, but I wanted you to hear that the experience these officers bring to the table, and there's several more stories just like that. Some districts have to assign officers. Not a single one of our officers has been assigned, and I think that's the key piece here. And Mr. Woodward was talking about all the safety initiatives we take in this district, and how, how safe we make it, but none of us are happy with that. That's, that's a great bar to set. We are always looking for the next best thing, how can we make it better? Again, this goes back to that award they, they earned. We are never satisfied with where we're at. We're in a good place, but we can be in a better place. That's what we keep working towards. I want to show you a little bit about our training at the Police Department. This is from last summer. If you remember last summer, Uvalde, Texas had happened, just like on our last day of school. So, we didn't get a chance to share much with our staff, with how we prepare as police officers. Fox 59 came out and filmed our active threat training, and this is something we do every year in June, so we just happened to have it already scheduled last year at one of our elementary schools, which was very timely with what happened. And we tailor our scenarios with what's going on around the country. So, we try to replicate what happened in Parkland, what happened in Uvalde, and prepare not just the SROs, but the entire Police Department. So, I'm going to show you this video, but I do want to let you know, while every officer goes through this training, the School Resource Officers went back and had several more hours of the same training. So, we get probably about three times more of the response training that the department gets, because we're in the schools. And we want the community to know how seriously we take our training. Oops, try that one more time.
This week, the Carmel Police Department is going through hours of active shooter training.
Yeah, today, the department invited our cameras along to see a scenario inside a local elementary school. Fox 59's Eric Graves shows us how officers prepare for one of the worst incidents imaginable.
Victim's good. And next?
This is what active shooter training looks like for the Carmel Police Department. Officers running through real-life scenarios with fake ammunition, and people role-playing as the shooter, and those that are in danger.
Carmel arriving, door number eight.
It's the sights and sounds of a school shooting. Gunfire blasted through speakers.
Help, help!
Actors yelling for help, and a bad guy to take down. All simulated inside this Carmel Elementary School.
People want to know that the, their police departments, their first responders, are well-prepared to, to handle a situation like this.
This training happens every year, but following the string of mass shootings across the country, Lieutenant Tim Byrne with the Carmel Police wanted people to know officers are ready, should something similar happen here.
Help, help, he's in here, he's in here, help!
Let me see here, drop the weapon, drop the weapon!
Byrne says there is no hesitation from officers when it comes to the immediate response to an active shooter situation.
Our officers are given not only the ability, but they're required to respond immediately and directly to the threat.
Every Carmel officer takes part in the training this week. Single officers or teams are thrown into several different scenarios with very little information ahead of time.
Because it replicates exactly what you might be feeling in the real moment.
I'm with you!
Sergeant Ben Fisher is the training supervisor with Carmel PD. For the exercises, officers use simulated ammunition and gear they would be wearing for the real deal.
Watch it! Watch it!
We'll get fire coming at the police officers, as well as fire going towards the bad guy potentially, because that's as real as we can make it.
Through the 20-plus years Carmel PD has been doing these exercises, Byrne says they've begun to train officers to treat victims as quickly as possible.
The faster we can get in there and start rendering aid to those folks, the better chance of survival that they have.
While these officers train, Byrne says it's important for everyone to be prepared for what to do in an active shooter situation.
Drop your gun, drop your gun!
It can happen anywhere, it literally can happen anywhere.
Lieutenant Byrne says there are great resources for how people should respond to an active shooter situation on the FBI website. We have a link to those on our website. In Carmel, Eric Graves, Fox 59 News.
So, last year, when we hosted that, we opened it up to administrators to show up and just observe our training, but we only allowed two procession to go. One, we weren't, I wasn't sure how many people were going to show up, and we weren't sure exactly how we could accommodate having outside people come in to observe the training. We had an overwhelming response last year with administrators coming in, so this year we had four slots per session of administrators able to come in. So, we were able to host 23 different administrators from around the district to come in and watch our training. Some of them are not 12-month employees, so they were coming on their own time, which I think that's important to say, the dedication they have to the kids, they come in their own time to learn what we did. Great input, there's dialogue back and forth when they see how the training goes. If they think about their building, what can they do better in their building to help us? So, we've had a great dialogue with that, and it's really been an eye-opener for them. If something like this happens, what is your role as the principal going to be? What's your role as the assistant principal? And to prepare their staffs for that situation. Something we teach, and I won't go into all the details, but I do want to say that every employee in the district gets ALIS training. And ALIS is an acronym for how we want to keep our building safe. That stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Those are principles that we teach, they're options. This is all options-based response to a threat. We try to get away from even saying "active shooter," because it's just an active assailant, active threat. It doesn't always have to be a gun, that's mainly where we go to when we think of it. But as we saw last year, a lockdown was called by a staff member, not because there was a physical threat to the students, it was during a passing period with 1,400 kids in a hall, in the hallways, they needed to get kids in a safe place really quick, called a lockdown. Because of our training, those halls were emptied within 60 seconds, and they were able to isolate the, the child that we needed to get to, to get some help, were able to do that. So, the staff has been trained, they feel empowered to call it, and that's what we really like to see with the training we do. I'm going to welcome Mr. Woodward back up here.
We talk a lot about empowerment, we also want to empower our parents, frankly. And so, we provided a program for them called the Parent Safety Academy. It's two nights, two hours each night, where we teach parents the fundamentals of school safety. We don't, we don't give details necessarily of our safety plan, but it's also very scenario-based. Here's a scenario, what would you do? And then, here's how we actually handle that. And then, what tweaks can we do that would make this more valuable for you as a parent with regards to communication? And how do you understand what we do? So, we've had some inquiries statewide, I think there are now four, four surrounding schools who also do a similar program, because, man, we share. I mean, that's what it's all about, we just, how do we help kids throughout our school? We will have some sessions again this semester going forward. So, let's face it, we got more to do. Lieutenant Miller said it, we're not satisfied. We feel pretty good about the progress that we've made, but there's always something more to do. The whole preparedness cycle is, you train, and, and then you test, and then you adjust, and then you train again. And so, that is our cycle, and that's a cycle we'll continue. So, any questions from the board?
Thank you so much, very detailed report. I do really appreciate how we're tracking progress against the strategic plan, right? We don't just put that out there, but we actually make sure that we're making progress. A couple things that I wanted to highlight was, I appreciate even the training that you give the board, so that we're prepared should an emergency arise. And then, I wanted to, to tell you, you already know, but just to give you an example of how this has impacted my family, the benefits of this training and teaching our children what to do, they go beyond the walls of the school. I have not shared with everyone yet, or a lot of people yet, but my daughter, someone tried to abduct her just a couple weeks ago, here in Carmel, when she was riding her bike. And she just graduated in May from high school, and she's now at IU. And so, you know, the age doesn't really matter, there's unfortunately, bad people out there that want to harm our children. And so, the education that you give our children is just, it's just, I'm so appreciated and overwhelmed with gratitude. One of the key things that she knew, that I did not teach her as a parent, because I did not know, was when someone is following you, you don't go home, because then they know where you live. I was like, oh my God, I am so glad she knew not to do that. So, just thank you there. Also, I really appreciate, and I want to learn more about the positive culture piece. Yeah, having positivity be the theme of how students interact with other students, educators interact with students and other educators, how this board interacts, I just think is just an awesome thing, so I want to learn more there. And then, I also want to give a shout-out to Lieutenant DJ Schoff. He was one of our previous SROs, and he helped us get the program to where it is, so I just appreciate his effort. And then, I had a question about background checks. When those background checks expire, right, for parents, what's the process to make sure parents are aware of that, and they do something about it?
Yeah, so, they expire every three years, and there's an email that is sent to the email on file, two months before it goes, before it expires. So, they're notified via email.
Okay. And then, I also, thank you for that, I appreciate the addiction program, our resources, and I think we could do an even better job of promoting those resources, since we know vaping is just a rampant issue in all schools. So, how we can get ahead of that, or mitigate that for students, I think is just paramount. What additional questions do we have, or comments?
I just wanted to say that the officers really walk the walk. They, they make relationships in every single school. It's not just something you say they're going to do, but I know all of the kid, the students in every single school know their SRO and have a relationship, and I think that that's really the biggest part of this whole plan, is, is that relationship piece.
That reminds me of something. Lieutenant Miller, you and I had spoke while I was going through the election process to learn more about your program, and I remember something that you said, that it's not only training that the SROs go through, you handpick them based on their personalities, so that they fit the demographic and the culture of that specific school, which completely plays into what Kristin, and the positivity piece that Louise was talking about, making sure that all the personalities fit. So, like in, was it Forest Dale, where you said the, there's more of a Hispanic population coming in, so there's somebody that can understand their language and speak to them. So, those things are so important, if you could speak a little bit to that.
You bring up a great point. So, it's one thing to pick an SRO, but with 15 different schools around the district, and anybody who's seen all the different schools, they have different personalities. The, the staffs, the kids, it's, it's just different, I don't know how to explain it any better than that. The hard part with the supervisors, we sit down and look at our candidates and go, okay, where is this SRO going to be most successful with that staff? Because we can't just arbitrarily put an SRO at, at a building, and sometimes people don't quite understand that, even within the district, why did this SRO go here versus over there? And when we've looked at it... And when we've looked at it, we just, we know what we're getting in that school, and we want to set both up for success, the kids, the staff, and the SRO. And so, it has been very difficult, but I think, I think with the term, we hit a homerun, because everything's really clicking, but a lot of time and effort goes into that. It's, there's a lot behind the scenes. I don't think people really realize what we do to make this program successful.
Yeah, if I could add a comment, or I'm sorry, did I interrupt? I echo what Kristen said on having the children be around officers early in their lives. I think it's part of the educational process for them to realize that it's a positive thing, and you're there for their protection, and I think that's wonderful. I've seen this presentation a couple of times, or different variations of it, and it is hard to imagine that we could do better, that we could be better equipped, or we could be better staffed, or better prepared. I don't have any suggestions for improvement, other than just keep going in the direction you're going, and it's a wonderful blessing we have in the city to have all you wonderful officers be a part of the school system. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
If I could just make a couple of comments. One is, these officers are here because of our community. Our community chose to tax themselves to bring specific school safety and make sure that we have at least one SRO in every classroom. So, this isn't just a school thing and a CPD thing. This is a community, a Carmel community thing, and we're fortunate to have that kind of a community behind us. The other one I want to mention, and I say this every year, though, but this is a dream come true, because to have those folks come up and introduce themselves, and the officers that weren't here as well. We have one person in every campus has one job, and that one job is to keep our kids and our staff safe, and they are relentlessly looking for ways to do that. And then, they collaborate with one another, because when one officer finds something, they talk to another officer, and then the group gets together, and the leadership of that is just an ongoing improvement process, and continuous improvement, which is so, so important. My whole life, and I've been a school safety officer probably longer, I'm probably the old, old guy in the room, but all my life, I've been at schools, at school, my school life, I've been a school safety specialist, but it's always been a percentage of my job, because I had a lot of other jobs that I had to do besides that. And you never really felt like you were doing it as well as it could be. And so, to have these, these men and women that know the staff, they know the people, they know the kids, and they're going to do everything they do to keep them safe, but also, they want them to thrive, and they're invested in their lives. They want them to be successful. And the more I've gotten to know the SROs, the more that I see what kind of special people they are, that really are investing. And the last thing I wanted to say was, Mr. Woodward wants an extremely high, you know, highly-trained staff, and on the first day of school in Carmel Middle School, I was walking through with my service dog, Jim Dandy, where we welcome kids to school, and a very, let me say it appropriately, but someone who's been working for Carmel Clay Schools for quite a long time as an, as an, as an instructional assistant stopped me in the hallway and said, "I recognize your face, but I don't see your ID badge. Can I see your, do you have an ID badge?" And it was on my belt, so I pulled my ID badge out, like, because she goes, "Thank you so much." And Officer Brodenax was right behind her, walking this way, and he just went, "Yeah!"[1178.21][1178.21](Laughter). So, even the superintendent gets carded if he doesn't have his ID showing. We're gonna, we're gonna ask you the question. And so, yeah, I just really appreciate your work and your leadership, and just, it's a good thing, and let's keep working.
Right. Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you so much.[1203.22][1203.22](Applause). We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. B.
All right. Well, school has begun, and I thought I'd start out with the wild world of Carmel Clay Sports. Because if all sports are rolling, our unified bocce and unified flag football teams are getting ready for a year of competition, and I really encourage everyone, you know, here, everyone that may watch this in the community, attend bocce or flag football. It's, it'll warm your heart. That's going on. Girls' golf's off to a fast start. I think they've won every tournament they've been in. If not, they've been second. They, they're off to an amazing start. Boys' soccer is ranked number one in the state, and they played number two in the state in Seansville, and won two to one. So, big competitions going on there. Our number-one-ranked girls' soccer team played number-three-ranked Hamilton Southeastern, and tied, and so, it was a thriller. So, we've got a lot going on. Our girls' volleyball team's off to a fast start. They beat Fishers, and they're going to be a team to watch. And then, my favorite sport, cross-country. You know, like, everybody's excited to hear what I'm going to say next. But anyhow, this is kind of the startup of the year, so they're doing their startup meets and that sort of thing. So, we'll be getting into competition, serious competition pretty soon, but they're on the courses, and they're running, and they're rolling. Boys' tennis plays HSE tomorrow at HSE, so they're going to kick off the season there. And the Greyhound Football Team scrimmaged last week, and are preparing for the season opener this coming Friday on the road at Homestead. So, the Greyhounds are, we have released the hounds. They're moving and doing what they love to do sports-wise. I also wanted to share that I was at Carmel High School Saturday morning to get my, my vehicle washed at the Carmel Clay Choir's Car Wash and Bake Sale. So, I got my, my car completely shining, you know, from the car wash, and, but I had to decline on the baked, baked goods, because it wasn't in line with my fitness goals. But, but the, but anyhow, it was amazing. And just to note, one of the vehicles that pulled in during that time was a huge fire truck. And so, we had about three or four choirs working on that thing, get that clean, and I thought that was pretty funny. Then I saw a picture of the, I don't know what that thing is. It's a huge truck that, like, is a vacuum cleaner for, like, the storm sewers and everything. That thing pulled up, and they were washing that thing, too. So, kudos to the choirs and the Street Department, really, all the fires, all the guys that stopped by to support our kids, and pretty special. Another big thing I wanted to report was, I know I've talked to you a little bit about this before, but the Green Ribbon School District Sustainability Award, and you might have saw the beautiful green plaque over there that was awarded, and also the banner over here on our left side. And Ramona Rice, one of our Assistant Directors of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, who's also very active with supervising, like, our green teams in our schools. And also, Prairie Trace Food Service Manager Beth Galloway went to Washington DC and received the award from the Department, you know, the National Department of Education, and were, just had a delightful time. And we were informed about this on April the 20th, and that we'd be receiving the award, and across the country, only 11 school districts were honored for their innovative efforts to reduce environmental impact utility costs, improve health and wellness, and ensure effective sustainability. And so, when you look at the bottom of that, leadership and facilities, which Mr. McMichael's always trying to stretch a dollar so far that you can see through it. And then, there are facilities and health, and then our environmental education. Beth was our, our Support Staff Person of the Year, and she's the one that got rid of plastic and went back to hard, you know, utensils. She's the one who's very active in anything and all things green. Dr. Dudley, anything I'm missing on that?
No, and just to add that Mrs. Galloway was just so excited to be able to go and to accept this award for Carmel Clay Schools. She was like, "Why did you send me?" And we said, "Because we value you so much," as our, one of our Support Staff Members of the Year. So, we were very excited that we were able to send her.
And I just want to, so, if you add this up, it's been more than 20 years that Carmel Clay Schools implemented energy-saving measures in each department, so they get positive results for the environment, but also save money, and save money for taxpayers. The district continues to pursue expansion of environmentally-friendly initiatives from efficiency and refinement of daily operations, continuous improvement in design, construction, and maintenance of our Carmel Clay Schools. The building level, all of our schools work to improve sustainability. Each of our schools has a thriving green team, and the green team is a group of students and parents and staff who have a passion for encouraging habits and initiatives that support and protect the earth, and promote an eco-friendly lifestyle. So, a big shout-out to, a thank you to Ramona and Beth for representing the district, and all the leaders that are doing what they can to keep Carmel Clay Schools green. But then, it comes down to the bell ringer. And of course, the bell ringer has to be the opening of the 23-24 school year. And I shared with our staff that I don't ever take day one for granted. And although I was feeling a lot better this year, because the roundabout was open, all the roads were open, Smoky Row was open, so that people from the west side could come to school that way, and there wasn't a big hole on the, in the road of Smoky Row in Keystone when you pulled off on the, so anyhow, a lot of those pieces were, took the stress level down, but I don't take it for granted, and because I know how much it goes in to making it happen for so many people. So, after visiting 12 schools last Monday, and the final three last Tuesday, and hearing all the stories, and seeing all the pictures, I'm very confident that 16,000 kids had an awesome first week of school. All this happens because of the 2,200-plus teammates that make up the CCS family. They all worked together so that our kids would have that special first day, that special first week, and now they're going to have a special school year. Now, I'll tell you one little story. One of my facility dog, Jim Dandy, and I stood in the car rider curb, you know, at one of our elementary schools on day one, and we welcomed our elementary school's friends back to school. We saw a little bit of every emotion. Some, some folks bounced in and were excited, you know, back in school. Some hugged staff that they knew from previous years. A few were looking a little nervous, and a some even shed of some tears. And that was just the parents. Well, I saw those emotions in our kids, too, and I love the way our staff scoops those kids up, and then, and we let our parents know that their kids are going to be okay, and that they were going to be okay, too. So, now, I took Jim so he could do his dog magic, and help calm kids that might be anxious, but I didn't expect that he would spend most of his time comforting parents who walked their little ones to the door, mustered lots of enthusiasm. They had a brave face, and then they started tearing up after their kids were out of sight. I had a lot of takers when I said, "Would you like to pet a dog?" And they did. I also shared with the staff that I think the secret sauce of Carmel Clay Schools is that we're so fortunate to have parents who trust us and partner with us and value what we do. We also have great kids who are excited and curious and ready to learn, but the third ingredient is our staff. And when I talk about our staff, I'm talking about everybody that comes to school. They're talented people with lots of smarts, lots of heart. And then, finally, we have a community that values school, and they show up and show out to support us. Some are firemen and women who were out in their trucks that had their lights a-flashing, and with big signs that said, "Slow down, school's back in session." That was pretty special. We have our SROs, of course, you've heard about tonight, but we also have other CPD officers that, that show up and just keep an eye on things and support us in different places. The Street Department, the city team, all the way from, all the way up to the mayor's office, are just very, very supportive. Mayor's Office and our city council, very, very supportive of us. And so, all of us together make our classrooms special places for kids to learn and grow, and our tagline probably says it best, that together we can achieve, together we do achieve. So, appreciate it, and that concludes my report. And now, we just have to replicate that for, you know, 170-some days. Good job.
Thank you, Dr. B. and team, for getting the school year off to a great start. And now, if there's no other business to come before the board, can I please have a motion to adjourn? What about a second?
Second.
All right. Then, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.